Hello. Hey, Chris.
Who's that you behind me today? Um, obviously Sean. Is that you in the front?
You got a twang.
Yeah. Pull it up on.
All right. Good evening, everybody. We're going to start. Hugs and kisses. Let's go. We're going to get rolling here. Our committee meeting for Monday, November 5th. And we're going to begin. We're going to take things out of order here. We're going to go right into US City Development Planning. Because we have some folks here, some guests. Not that Assistant Chief Seaver is not our guest, but we're going to, I already spoke with him. So, Ms. Zlooski, also Ms. Seaver.
All right. So, we're going to open up with planning and development. And the first item on the agenda is the Thriving Neighborhood Challenge for Gateway Park. And I believe that, I'm not sure if Kristen is speaking, or are you going to have Mary speak? Or, it refers to the Gateway Park project.
I think.
Let Mary speak.
Yeah.
Okay. Come on up, Mary.
Well, here, you want to use the microphone? Let's see if this thing is even on. Here you go. You have your ear turned up. If you're good.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is for the, this is for the people. Oh. So, uh... Have you seen the renderings?
Yes, we have. It's in our package.
Oh. So, it would be constructed with fittings, just to make sure that it stays, you know, fall down on anybody. Leans on it, or whatever. But, and it would have an educational component attached to it. It would be in, it would be in eight different colors. Six of them are colors that are the flag. Current rainbow flag, and then two are from the original. And each one would, word that would, um, way to just draw, make people more curious about and aware of some of the history. And so, the part of the, the goal for the master plan for the park was that, from the very beginning, the idea was that it would be a place to include new contemporary art and to add that level of public art to our community. And so, so he asked me, do I think it should be, did I think it should be permanent or temporary, or what did I think? And my first good reaction was, I'd love to see this permanent. But after more thought, sorry, you know, we really need to have a system to determine, like, what's permanent. We might be, like, getting what occurred before the horse year. And it probably makes sense as a temporary installation. It can be there for a year or two. And with the option that, and the, the fittings would be placed in a way that when it's gone, they would be lower, so you could cover it up with grass. You would know they were there. If another art installation came and wanted to use those fittings, they would be in place to make that possible. But that seems like also something more reasonable to ask for, more support than a commitment for, since it is sort of the first art installation, aside from the pillars that were part of the original plan. So, the application that was submitted, was submitted after the first discussion with the idea that it would be a permanent structure.
But having talked to Chris Holland, and Kristin, and a few other people, it sounded like, exploring this as a temporary installation would be a more sensible option. Maybe still allow for celebrating the fifth year anniversary of the film uprising. It would still draw a lot of attention to the park. It was, I also think it would be, you know, based on what Todd told me about the Pride Alliance, that in the council, focusing on the community, and this, that they really want to move people throughout the state. So, I think it's a great way to draw attention and foster connectivity, and perhaps attract other people to the city for another reason. So, that's, I just put, is that answer your...
And it seems to me like we're, then, we're asking for money for something that's eventually going to be non-existent, which, I mean, considering the importance of the demographics and the, in the diversity of the city, is there a reason why we shouldn't talk about being permanent?
So, one of the, so just to present all the pros and cons. One of the considerations was, because there hasn't been a framework created yet for how these things would get decided, one of the things you want to try to avoid is too much clutter, where, you know, is, is everyone going to come to you with a proposal? And are you going to set a precedent where you have to say yes to everyone all of a sudden? And all of a sudden, there's not going to be any green space, because it's all different sculptures or different pieces. And so, one of the ideas of the, the temporary piece was, you know, maybe it is something that the community comes to love, and it makes a lot of sense, and then could evolve to something more permanent later, but without committing to that right away, because it is a lot of money, and it's not going to be something that's going to stay there all the time. This was a way of getting to, you know, have something that will look very substantial, that'll really get the message out, but also to have it be a learning experience and see how it does. And if everyone says, we love this, we want it to be here forever, then I think that can still, it can be, you know, the metal pieces could still be the same, the fittings would still be the same. It would need to be the framework in the middle that would need to be, you know, at some point, although I don't think it would be anytime real soon.
Yeah. I guess I just, for me, it's, for me, the message is the opposite. Like, when we talk about putting the Veterans Memorial in Goose Hill, we don't talk about it being temporary, right? Because we're honoring something that's really important. So, to me, honoring this diversity, to say, well, we don't really know, people, I don't know. I, I just feel like every time we've had this discussion about public art, the, the temporary aspect has never come into it. So, it's kind of, why this, kind of thing, I guess is bothering me a little bit. And again, what are the chances it can actually go forward if it's just really going to be like, kind of money run away, because it's going to come down? I don't know.
As far as the financial commitment, so currently, it's in front of the foundation for $43,000.
For a permanent art installation. So, if it was temporary and constructed out of wood and steel, that cost could potentially come down to about $20,000 to $23,000, knowing that there's a number of other projects that are in the works. I don't know where that fares. But again, I believe part of the application process in relation to the private neighborhoods has to do with sustainability, that it's going to be for projects that are going to be part of the community for an extended period of time. But, you know, if it worked out that the Schenectady Foundation, private neighborhoods, that this is not an opportunity to proceed further, because it's temporary as opposed to permanent, I'm not quite sure where the other funding opportunities may come in. But who knows? Who may step up in the community and try and help that home.
I have a question. When you were talking, you said something about moving other places. So, is there, are you saying there's a plan that it would be permanent there, but if you took it down from there, it would go someplace else? Do I understand you to say that?
I'm saying in terms of sustainability. Like, the components, you could reuse either in the same configuration, or you could think about...
If the letters, if there were an installation somewhere else, and you wanted to install the letters in a different configuration besides the orchards, or if you wanted to, if, if they had such a success, and Freedom Park and the social said, hey, can we have that for next year? There would be the possibility that it could go to other places and educate other people and spread that message to a larger area. So, I'm just saying that, even if it's temporary in this location, it would be made in such a way as it wouldn't have to be that once it's taken down, that's the end of the story. I think in terms of the grant, my understanding is, there were two 48 applications that totaled about $900,000. I think $150,000 available to give out. And I believe they were also looking, you know, some, they said they wanted everything from $100 to $100,000. But some of it might be just planting some animals on your street, which is some like temporary. And some of it, you know, might be much more substantial, long-term things. So, I think if there's a good argument put forward, and then, and I was also saying whether it should be permanent or temporary, but I think that, from what I understand, is the grant, they, they want something that's saving the community and educating people, and is sustainable and...
That will, will just jeopardize your funding. And, and yes, they received 48 applications, but they narrowed them down. So, what you're saying is that you are in that group, I think 20, that's going to be moving on to this consideration in the second proposal piece. So, it was submitted as permanent, and now it's going to, as you go into your second consideration, it becomes temporary. My question is, will that jeopardize your funding? Is that something that we need to talk to the potential funders before we make this decision? And further beyond that, if this, if, for say, for instance, because the recommendation is that we go with temporary, is there other funding that can be identified to make sure that it happens? So, you know, if the, if the foundation says, no, that's not what we want to survive in the neighborhood, we want something permanent, sustainable, and this isn't going to happen now that we're saying it's temporary, is there other funding that, since the suggestion is temporary, is there other funding that we can get that, so if it's temporary, as Chad has said, is going to cost less than it would if it was permanent? So, is there someplace else that funding can be, come from in order to make it, and put it there temporarily, if that's the direction we're going?
I mean, I was just going to say, in terms of the Thriving Neighborhood Challenge and some of the...
If, if we're setting up a platform for Gateway Parks to host different sculptures and temporary public art installations, which, you know, a lot of times what public art is, a lot of times it is temporary, because nothing happens sustainably over there for years. I think that that would be something that the foundation is open to, and the advisory, you know, committee for the board. I'm not saying that it shouldn't be permanent, or, you know, I'm not saying one way or another. But I, I don't think it's something that's going to prohibit the project from being funded, from their perspective.
Then I would just add the direction that I received from the foundation after the first round was to follow up with the city to receive permission to move forward. So, there would need something in writing that says that we support this proposal project. And then it would move forward in the next round of presentations that I believe happened in the first week in December. So, then I would work to prepare that presentation. And then, you know, it's equipping among every other presentation that's going to become a part of the Schenectady Foundation regarding who are the final recipients of the funding. Just be careful, the city says they support it, doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be funded at the end of the day.
And I would also just say that it is a competitive, it's going to be a competitive process, you know, that's, that's made up of a board making the decisions. Some of it is citywide chief funding. And so, I think almost if it is a cheaper solution, then it might feel better, because there's other things to support in January. So, that's just another kind of amendment I would pull from. And I think, you know, I think that this is the first time that the community's already made challenges in the kind of areas I'm aware of. To Chad's credit, I think he's one of the few applicants who actually wrote down that what he was proposing was on a city park, and put in his application that he was reaching out to the city or wanting to get back. And I know that there were definitely other applications, like, that are on city parks, that have been, it's been acknowledged that they can proceed to the next round of funding. But they didn't recognize in their application that the city should perhaps be consulted. But I don't think that the challenge put that statement... I think it's Professor Chad brought to attention that he was reaching out to the city, but that was not even a nice thing. Well, yeah, as long as the city, you know, receives it positively and supports you, you know, you, you, like, you can approach people after. But I think part of it was that we had the potential to write it.
Lines, though, since there are other projects, that, that kind of puts the, an issue in place. I don't have any problems with the merits of the project. I'd rather the board say, we're going to move forward with this, and then, for, because there are other projects that are doing things in parks, they haven't been asked for, and it kind of is kind of a, an implied approval of the project. And so, we're putting support behind one project, but not others. I think that's an issue. It's not the merits of the project, it's not the project itself. But if we're supporting one project over others, that to me becomes kind of a, an issue of favoritism.
Well, I think you put something in your letter saying, you know, as...
The proposal is something that we think is in line with the master plan for the park. We don't have an objection to you. But we want to be clear that this is not cleansing the project over any other activity that we just, us per your request, we're stating that we look at it, and we don't have a problem with it. I think that's the only thing we'd like to see.
When I get letters of recommendation, I get something from one group, and then other ones don't have that same thing, I look at it, and that's all I'm, my concern with it. That's the only thing.
Ms. Portman, let's just know what's...
That's okay. I'm sorry. No, you can go.
All right. And so, but the difference to your point, Mr. Palomini, is that have the other groups asked the city? I think that makes a difference. If someone comes forward and asks, we, yes, there are other projects perhaps submitted, because I don't know who all submitted projects in other parks. But this particular group has come to ask, the other groups haven't asked for that support. Or, and as they understood Chad was saying, is that the foundation said that you need to get the city's okay. So, that's part of it. So, it's not like he's asking this because he's trying to get a leg up on other people, but the foundation has said, we need you to print it out.
I don't believe that.
No. I'm just saying that point out.
Because of the nature of this project?
I don't think the foundation wants to fund something that the city would never approve or what happened. So, I think they were just trying to employ that part of the process of, like, supporting something that the community would not support, or the city would give them that it is a large installation. That's an important thing.
Same concern, because I think a lot of times it's a group that's been active in that park, and it's done a lot of things in that park already. So, there's already an established relationship with the city, but because this is a, a new group trying to do something for the first time in a new park, that they just want to make sure, as Kristen said, that they're, they're not saying, like, here's the money, we're going to do this. And then the city's like, oh, no, you're not. They're just trying to be respectful, I think.
Well, can I just go with mine, the council, that we did actually pass a resolution of support for Create, which is another public art project for the Gateway Challenge. So, we already have showed our support when asked. Maybe there's a better way to format this for the next round, and I'd be open to, you know, suggestions on that in terms of, like, what that procedure is like. I think the challenge with this is, we didn't know who was going to apply, what they were going to...
So, in terms of Gateway Park and art installations, is there, is there something in writing that says that art installations that go there will be temporary? Does it, is there any, any, you know, having...
No, there's nothing that states, but I think it's just because of, I think, you know, this is something I was hoping to talk to Kristen about. I think now that, you know, there's so much stuff happening in the downtown, and there's a lot of interest in, now that public art is something that's, like, people are starting to talk about, it'd probably be good to have sort of a format for how that happens. I mean, this sort of raised kind of new questions, and, and as I told President Kojer, they, this is one that's going to come up more and more, so we're going to have to figure out, you know...
A better procedure. Or what the answers are. What the guidelines are around.
Yeah. And you don't want to control it so much that you're spelling out what every piece of art has to look like, or who can do it there, but you just want to have some system in place for who do you ask, and what's the process, and how do you get there. But part of the initial mission was definitely to have art be a part of the fabric of that, that park, and to be part of the placemaking for downtown.
And just to give a little more context in relation to Schenectady Pride, it's interesting Gateway Park.
Last year, we hosted Schenectady Pride on the Jason Marketplace, which has been growing in success each and every year. And this year coming up, on 2019, as, as memoir has mentioned, the 50th anniversary of the film uprising. It's also New York State is hosting World Pride. So, in recognition of that, we're going to be starting our festival on the J Street Marketplace, and then we're going to do a queer liberation march, reenacting their liberation march from the 1970s, down St. Street with city permission, from the Jason Marketplace to the Gateway Plaza, or Gateway Park, where we plan to have, like, a welcome home ceremony, where we're going to be hosting Schenectady Pride for years to come. So, it can be a little home for Schenectady Pride as well.
Any feedback from the Stockade Neighborhood Association yet? Because, again, this is Thriving Neighborhoods. We thought that it's supposed to be partnerships with your local neighborhoods was one of the things they were really pushing for. Have we had any response from the Stockade Neighborhood Association regarding the project? Are they even aware of it?
I've been invited to the meeting on Wednesday.
For this project? Yes. And while they're following, is there anyone get another rendering of, of what you're thinking of doing with the wood? I mean...
It would look exactly the same.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah. It would just be paints of wood.
Bringing across considerably.
So, the dimensions would be the same, the character, yeah. It just would be a different material and paint.
And it'll still be the same fittings and everything that we were talking about?
Yeah. Just for wind and, yeah, safety and everything else you want. Yeah. And, and in terms of...
And for, for, for the reason why a park was more a whole downtown, like, it's part of it, you know, it's part of it was starting to be...
Haters of the community college, to the student housing, to the New Millian Artisan District. So, everybody visiting downtown Schenectady is really meant to be a gateway into the whole city. And so, I think, I know you just spoke against it, downtown Schenectady Corporation, and they've been very supportive. But, and it might be we're reaching out to the college for their, their support as well. But I just wanted to, to make that point, that it's a larger, larger audience that it's, that it's really intended to serve.
When's the due date?
So, they've already sent out invites for folks to do presentations the first week in December. Potentially.
Ms. Prazo.
Well, I certainly have my full support. I'm happy to, to move the resolution. We have a second. I think it's a great project.
I just need clarification. So, are we talking about permanent or the temporary? Because I think she, you came totally with asking for temporary, although initially it was permanent. So, that was your ask, am I right, Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Is that the ask?
So, if the city council decides to approve a temporary art installation, then that's what I'll inform the Schenectady...
Everyone wants to eat. The ultimate goal, we would like a positive support for something to be recovered. And so, if you feel more comfortable with the temporary approval, then we would love to get support for, or you want a permanent, then, then that's, that's certainly an option too. Mostly, we want, we would like to...
Approval?
Say yes, approval to proceed with.
Mr. Prazo.
So, Ms. Prazo, you said to the other project, we just did a support letter, and we, we didn't do a resolution. We didn't do a formal resolution.
It's a resolution for Create, yes.
I thought we just did a letter from the Creative Art...
Yeah. We did a resolution.
It was a resolution that we did, yes?
And you just need a letter of support, correct?
Resolution.
Or a resolution of support.
The email says permission.
All right. Well, Tino, what's your interpretation?
Well, if it's at, if it's at the council table, it's a resolution. Otherwise, it's a letter from development. To me, if it comes to the council table, we're talking about a resolution here, because that's our function.
Right.
Thank you.
So, we can, just clarification, Kristen, we can, we can have this, I, I'm inclined to Mr. Palomini, I don't want it to, I don't want to give an advantage over one group over another group. And I, nothing against the project at all, but I don't want us to come out and say, well, we support this, here's the resolution, and we're not giving a resolution to all the other people that have...
Yeah. I don't think that that's going to be their interpretation, like, the foundation, because I think because this was just something that, without the city's support, it wouldn't happen.
I just want some clarity around, we're going to do a resolution, saying we're supporting it, but we're, how are we going to word this?
We can word it in a way that, that clearly, you know, delineates, like, you know, what you're supporting, and that it's not...
I mean, you can say that the, the council believes that this project is in line with the original goals or the master plan.
How about if the Schenectady Foundation funds the project, we would approve of it being put in the park?
That takes...
That works. I think that's a lot.
I just don't want us to give one organization...
But I also, I also think the foundation has, has not acted appropriately in this regard. If there's other projects in parks, they should have been asked likewise. And, and nothing against your project. The foundation messed up in this regard.
If, if they were doing it for one, why are they...
Well, I don't think there's similar projects. I don't think there's public art in other parks. That's not what...
There's stuff in other parks.
Public art, we're talking about. I'm, I'm not talking about cleaning up, I'm not talking about garbage cans, I'm talking about putting down benches. Everybody wants those. Everybody wants...
I know there's a substantial project for Bellevue.
But, but I also think, I think that Chad did his due diligence in saying that he had reached out to the city and had her track. I think some of the other, and I, I haven't seen all the applications, but I would not be at all surprised if some of the other, because they've worked with the city so hard on the improvements that they've already made, they have listed the city of Schenectady as a partner, because they have been a partner to all progress that's been made to date. I think this was just a flag that said, we hope they will be, you know, a partner in allowing us to do this project, but we're going to be honest and say the...
My, my thing has nothing to do with this project. I believe the foundation didn't, did screw up in this regard. And if there's other projects, and I know there are, that do substantial things to a park, they should have been asked as well.
I don't...
But I know for a fact there are. So, with that, I, I mean, I will support if the foundation approves the funding.
So, you think that better be acceptable?
Well, it's got to be a resolution.
Why don't you say resolution? That's what I'm saying.
Yes, I think that would be fine. I think that they just want to know that if they fund it, the city's not going to...
I already did.
Oh, okay. First, second, okay. All in favor?
I...
Okay. All right.
Who's going to produce this resolution?
I think Mr. Palomini's going to have the language.
All right. I'll say it. It's a draft, subject to your approval, and if there are changes, all right. It'll be, it's a sum of stuff, that's the way you discuss your stuff.
I find them off on a unique, complex, previous...
Good for you.
The, the next item on the agenda is a zoning change request, and I believe that Kristen has that, and she has backup for Mr. Gilmore.
So, we received a request from the property owner of...
...of New Blight Street, to change the zoning of the parcel from R1 single-family residential to PTX commercial. And the purpose of this is to allow the operation of a taster and being serviced centers. The property's family has kind of, kind of withheld itself, one and two-family houses around it, but it also kind of bumped up the base to PTX district, so lots of mixed uses. But it always started in zone as residential. And so, we are just asking that if we refer to the plan of the site, that...
House that's going to be right next to the parking lot in the picture, this one right here. Do you know if there are one of the people that signed the petition in support? I'm going to ask Frank...
They have signed a circular that Sean took around. He has, okay, about 12 signatures.
Yeah, I saw that in our packet. I just didn't know if that little house had signed in support of the project.
Because they, in fact, initially induced Sean to what was purported to be a commercial property when he purchased it, and they were very supportive of him.
Can we get just a...
Yes, I know.
Determination on whether they... They should have been...
They are, right? There are, yeah.
So this is in terms of Speedway and now going down Strong Street. The Speedway, there's-
Frank, do you want to come up?
Sure.
Because you know more about the-
I got you.
Going to leave that away for you or what?
You're too beautiful. I'm sure we could pull it off.
That's a check from Frank.
When, when was the number of years ago? Yeah. The zoning changed in 2010, I think because of a strong push for single-family residences, other non-compliant uses. This had been prior, two years prior, it had been a zone commercial. So three, uh, three, or three lot subdivision with, and you can see it even in this Big Mac, how they have to make one, which happened a year ago. Comes in, Strong Street, and sort of wedge, it's a non-compliant special use, knocks off two of the three lots. So two of the lots are without public access. So it actually limits the ability of a contractor to proceed in compliance with the R1 zoning. The other thing is, when we were doing this research, I wrote Marion to go in on the MLS, and we looked at the last several years, sales of property within this region. Some two-family, but mostly one. They're all, they all seem to be well taken care of. They're probably at least 50 years old. There hasn't been any new development in that neighborhood because it's really basically filled. Only a few sales, maybe six years. Range from 40, the highest price was 50,000. So if we're dealing in a competitive real estate market with comparable, does it make sense to build 2,000 square foot house, 24,000 square foot house at maybe $110 a square foot? If you do the math, there is no possibility of a viable business or commercial venture using the current zone. So then the question is, is there a commercial use that could work that would not be disruptive to the neighborhood and be somewhat compatible with the corridor that's happening over anyone? Here's the actual parcel. You can see that the, how the road really lops off. And we are not, these folks would not be able to access this because this is private building right up to there. Here are some of the other properties. They're all well taken care of, very, very nice. And they seem to be friendly. They coexist with Rick Swett for, he and his family for probably 70 years. And there are other commercial developments nearby that seem to work okay. Here is before the comprehensive plan and the desires to sort of realign certain development that was happening sort of sporadically and without necessarily a larger schema. This was, this was the 1075 Strong Street two years earlier. It was, it was in a commercial C1, C2 district or C, you know, C1 district. And it seems to fit. If you see, all of this is commercial. So what did it look like? Currently, it looks like this. This big chain link fence, perfectly open, visible, quite unattractive, and with absolutely no investment and probably very limited city tax value to this current operation. This is what we're hoping you folks will consider. It's pre-engineered metal building with an office complex in front. All of this complies to the commercial zoning. I worked closely with Abby. There's 25 foot setback in the back, there's 12 foot setbacks on the side. Those are all done as long. Arbor Vitae runs up on the inside against a six-foot stockade fence that gives you visual privacy and separation from the residential activity. And there are a number of parking spaces here, some for the staff of Shine in his office. Before plan, if you remember which board it was, looks like this. The operation involves repairing, replacing, mainly rebuilding diesel engines in, in tractor trailers or tractors. They pull into each bay, the door goes down, their, their exhaust system goes into a vertical evacuation system in the roof. There's, the noise is very minimal because most of it's occurring inside. And I don't think there's any pollution. The landscaping is an important part of Shine's wishes. We're actually going to approach the gas station next door, see if we can't find some cluttering trees, sort of welcome people to this, this part of Strong Street. The other couple of shots are the last shot that I'd really like to show you is, it's an old neighborhood, they like their privacy, the streets are narrow, the houses are very close together, but there's a lot of care and privacy. So these, these fences, maybe not in total compliance to city regs that probably over six feet, are everywhere. And I think so it's, it's the same theme that we would be building on in terms of enclosing this operation to be a clean operation, planned operation, and helping to make it a good neighborhood. So it's, this is not art, this is commerce, and this is trying to retrieve a viable tax base for a property that is pretty much undevelopable in its current zoning overlay. So I would urge that you consider this use. Estelle's a long way to go in terms of developing drawings, developing site plan approval, and his son is going to school for this, this whole business in Boston. I think the other, the other anecdote that I'd just like to share, and I'm sure you all know it, is the Guyanese are a force in the city. There are over 6,000. That's 10% of the entire city, roughly. And they, if, I, Mary and I are very active in better neighborhoods. There is also, and they've done a ton of work in the last 50 years, they do one house at a time. Community Builders is an extraordinary organization. They do many houses at a time. But if you look at the city, the real redevelopers are Guyanese, and it has changed the quality of the neighborhood extraordinarily. Has to do with their culture, their family-centered values, their neatness, their enterprise, and as a people, we have wonderful relationships in terms of small and not so small architectural projects. We're doing several with David Hogan Camp and MBNI, both in Crane Street and Eastern Avenue. We're doing two Hindu temples, one with Shine's people who are very active on White Street and a big one in, over in Loudville. So I'm just doing a little, little push for welcoming these extraordinary enterprising, delightful people and giving them a chance at clean commerce, an alternative to the wrong mapping of a, of a property that is now pretty much going to stay derelict and without tax base unless we do something. Thank you.
Last question, the last picture that you held up?
The last picture?
The one with going down Snail Street, it looked like.
Okay. This one here?
Yes. So neighbors on both sides, does he own this house on this?
No, no, he only owns, owns, it's 35 by 100. It's basically 3500 square feet and it's, it's currently dispensed in right next to the house.
All right. And the people that live in that house, signed it?
Yes, they did.
What's the house number? 10?
I don't, I honestly don't know the name, but-
1085, and I looked it up and yes, it's the house right next door.
Okay. And, um, did you see anything on here? Yeah, I saw that, I saw. That's not, that's not that house. Were these people-
No, no, let me show you there.
I know this, I know these people right here. I'm talking about-
It's a diagram, but-
I'm talking about that house.
This, this is their house.
That's not what that number is. Okay, so, yeah.
It's, it's about 2,000 square feet, it's a story and a half. This one's a little bigger. They're all, and very well taken care of.
Right, so you're saying the people that live there signed it, and then the people that live on the other side of Snail Street?
He said, he said he met with everybody.
I'm just, okay. I have lived on Strong Street and the person that lives on the other house, their name is not on this list. My other question is, I see where it says owner, because, you know, if something of this magnitude, I think that the people that are going to be impacted because they live there should have, be able to have some input. So I see that it says owner. Does this mean owner occupied or I simply own it and I rented it out? Which is different than, yeah.
You mean who's operating the business?
No, I mean the side, the people who signed the thing. And, and also the restaurant that's right around the corner, I guess this is going to be a pretty close proximity.
Problems.
Yeah, so-
He goes there regularly. They're very, he's very good friends with Debbie and Sean.
And so they're-
They, they have no problems with him.
They're not in the position either. So, you know, it just seems to me that people that, if you already had that support, they would be people who would also sign us to say that. So I, I, I just-
He will be a good neighbor. In fact, Rick Swett, we do a lot of work with him, relayed a wonderful story. He was, one day it was snowing like heck and he, he was going to have to hire a commercial plumber and Shine came by with his truck and cleaned him out. He said, oh, you said, no, I'm just a good neighbor.
So all we're doing is letting this go to the zoning board.
Right.
With zoning board, they're going to send her-
Plan-
The planning commission is going to send out letters to all the neighbors and they will have the opportunity to come through.
Right, this is just the first step. They have to go through the whole-
So, I mean, the neighborhood will be able to voice their opinion beyond their absolute shape. Yeah, it looks like a great project.
Looks like an awesome project.
It does.
Let them flush it out, right?
Yeah.
Come a little bit.
Yeah, Christine says it's going to take up to three months. It's a long process.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you. Thank you.
So back to, um, Mr. Kojer here next, the Saudi one-year anniversary of the senior center at the AOH.
Yeah, we're just going to do a nice resolution to thank all the numerous volunteers that have really made the senior center successful as it is. Members of the Iberian Hall and Kingsway will be present to accept the resolution. I'll get all information to-
All in favor?
Aye.
A move that we recess?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mary?
Public safety.
Call to our public safety. We have one item on the agenda, political test, partnership trend.
Like a whole free, sir? There you go.
I just want to say I struggled for years to get first study agenda. Thanks, Council President.
Grant, we're awarded the City Security Police Department regarding the Wolf Vest program for justice. We've been awarded $30,400 to purchase of new vests over the next 18 months or so. We apply for this based on replacement vests after every five years. Some of the city started about six, seven years ago, so this is a little larger cycle than usual, but just runs that way because when we initially set this up, it was a two-year process, the other 160 vests. So as time goes on, you see it spread out over time. It won't be more evenly distributed over a particular year. There is a 50% match. This covers basically between $800, $850. This covers half of that. So that's, any questions?
Questions? Comment?
Free projects.
Can I have a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Any other item before public safety?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Finance, Mr. Paul.
Just calling, calling to order the finance committee. The two items on the agenda are for calls for public hearing. First one is for the DSAD 2019 budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Second one is a call for a public hearing for the Upper Union Street bid 2019 budget.
Second.
Thank you. And then, all in favor, aye. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mary, Jen.
I will call to order, we're on over here, argumentative efficiency. One item of this evening, multiple dwelling property inspection, our executive action plan, Mr. Bulte. As you know, this year, the New State Controller lead an audit of the city's multiple dwelling property inspection program. Their audit had five recommendations for the city to consider and will require to give them a response by November 2nd. That response is cached. Any other questions that we have or have a chance to review it? What we're looking forward to the council to pass a resolution, authorizing the reply. Questions or concerns? Yep, need a motion?
No.
And ZW?
Yeah, Paul Manny, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any else come for committee? That will adjourn. It's Paul Manny, second by Ms. Lucy Kowalski. It's all in favor, say aye. Thank you, we are adjourned.
I want to reopen the city planning and development and ask that we go into executive session.
For what reason?
To discuss pending contracts and financial matters.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are in executive session.
Remember to vote.